Welcome to the City Council Meeting of the 11th of July. Merci, Mesdames et Messieurs, c'est le Conseil Municipal pour la Ville d'Atrophe pour l'an 2018. For those who are able to, could you please rise for a moment of personal reflection and remain standing for the singing of our national anthem? Thank you. If you could remain standing, we'll ask our colleague, Councillor Hubley, to introduce our very special guest who will sing our national anthem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure to introduce a very talented 12-year-old from my ward, Ms. Marleah MacLeod. And I say I'd better correct that because today is her 13th birthday, so maybe after she does this weekend, I'll sing happy birthday to her. Marleah is a passionate singer, songwriter, and performer. Ms. MacLeod, as she is known on social media, plays the piano, guitar, my favorite instrument, the ukulele, and is currently the lead singer in an amazing band. This past year, she released her very own indie EP of original music that she wrote, composed, and produced. The proceeds from her CD release party were donated to the Canada Food Cupboard. Marleah loves to sing and inspire others who have been through a rough time and need a little pick-me-up. She also works with many different groups to give back to our community. I'd like to ask you to join me now in welcoming Ms. Marleah MacLeod to City Hall today to sing our national anthem.
Car ton bras s'est porté l'épée, il s'est porté la croix. Ton histoire est une épopée des plus brillants exploits. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Well, thank you very, very much, and happy birthday. Great to have you here to open our council meeting. It's now my pleasure to invite Samia Hirani to the podium for this Council City Builder Award presentation.
And I'm also pleased to welcome Ottawa's award, Councillor Jean Cloutier, to join us for the presentation.
Welcome, Councillor Cloutier, welcome. Samia has worked tirelessly for the World Partnership Walk, an initiative of the Aga Khan Foundation Canada, and applies her organizing skills and enthusiasm for their fundraising efforts. In 2008, Samia joined the foundation as a volunteer tour guide, and two years later, she expanded her volunteer efforts by participating in the World Partnership Walk as a marketing lead on the Ottawa Walk team. The World Partnership Walk is Canada's largest annual fundraising movement dedicated to finding global poverty. Funds raised by the annual walk support development initiatives that enable millions of women and men to lift their communities out of poverty and build a brighter future. As an integral part of Ottawa's World Partnership Walk corporate engagement team, she led by example and commitment and passion, invested over 100 volunteer hours. It's my honor to acknowledge these contributions with the City Builder Award. This award recognizes people who have demonstrated an extraordinary commitment to making our city a better place today and in the future through outstanding volunteerism or exemplary action.
This award recognizes people who have demonstrated an extraordinary commitment to making our city a better place.
Also volunteered with the Walk sister event, World Partnership Golf, where her energetic personality and interpersonal skills helped make the annual event a memorable success. This year, Samia also raised funds by engaging her own workplace through their youth network and creating the Public Servants Shattering Poverty. She has raised funds for programs to improve living conditions for people regardless of their faith or origin, and she continues to serve as a role model for others to get involved in causes beyond our borders. Through her volunteering efforts, more teachers are being trained, impoverished children receive quality education, and more mothers have access to quality health care services and facilities. Through her efforts and her example, more people are aware of international development issues and their own ability to step forward and make a difference. Although Samia volunteers in the Ottawa area, her impact contributes to positive change across the global community. She has never shied away from hard work and long hours because her dedication to finding global poverty has always come first. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Samia very much for her many contributions to our city, and on behalf of your councillor, Jean Cloutier, and all members of council, it's my pleasure to present you with the Mayor's City Builder Award. Congratulations for this.
Your worship, Jim Watson, council members, ladies and gentlemen. My warmest thanks go to his worship, Jim Watson, and his staff for this wonderful award, and for the Aga Khan Foundation Canada for nominating me for the City Builder Award. I am truly grateful and humbled. Growing up, one of the main values I learned was volunteerism, and one of the first memories I have as a child is being a junior volunteer, helping to provide water to the senior citizens, serving food, or even helping to index the mirrors in the bathroom. At the time, I remember thinking, I don't really like doing these tasks. But as I've gotten older, I've come to understand the value of those tasks. It was not about the action itself, but about giving my time to my community and to those in need. As I've matured and taken on various roles within my community, this sentiment has strengthened within me. Being a part of the fundraiser, like the World Partnership Walk, has shown me how small acts can make a big impact in another part of the world. That's because the funds raised through the World Partnership Walk go directly to support the development programs in Africa and Asia. Initiatives that give girls the opportunity to go to school and get an education, or that provide much-needed access to health care by providing mobile clinics in rural areas. These are just a few examples of how millions of people unlock their potential to build a better life. Before I close, I'd like to thank my husband for supporting me in all my voluntary efforts, my parents who have ingrained in me a sense of service to my community, and I'd like to thank the leaders in my community and my friends who inspire me daily. When you see others take on voluntary responsibilities along with other personal obligations, it really, truly inspires you to be your best self. I'd like to close with a quote. In his speech in 1983, His Highness Aga Khan spoke about the responsibility to spark hope in the poor. There are those who enter the world in such poverty that they are deprived of both the means and the motivation to improve their lot. Unless these unfortunates can be touched with a spark, they will only sink back into renewed apathy, degradation, and despair. It is for us who are more fortunate to provide that spark. End quote. Sometimes we forget how fortunate we are and have access to our basic needs and the resources to succeed in our future. Being a part of the World Partnership Walk team has allowed me to look at my life beyond my backyard and be a part of a global movement. Thank you.
A roll call, please, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Consulier Monnette.
Present.
Councillor Middick.
Here.
Councillor Harder.
Present.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Present.
Councillor Elchantiri.
Present.
Councillor Cadri.
Present.
Councillor Taylor.
You see.
Councillor Shirelli.
Here.
Councillor Egloy.
Here.
Councillor Deans.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Consulier Fleury.
You see.
Councillor Nusbaum.
Here.
Councillor McKenney.
Present.
Councillor Leaper.
Here.
Councillor Brockington.
Councillor Cherneschenko.
Present.
Consulier Cloutier.
Here.
Consulier Blay.
Councillor DeRousse.
Councillor Moffett.
Here.
Councillor Kakish.
Present.
Councillor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
Here.
You have a quorum, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. Confirmation of minutes, adoption de process verbal for the 27th of June 2018. Carried? Declaration of interest, including those originally arising from prior meetings, declaration de conflit d'intérêt? None? Communications as presented, regrets? Councillors Middick, motion 7113 of 13 June 2018. Councillor Brockington and Councillor Blay advised they be absent from the council meeting of the 11th of July. Motion to introduce reports, motion important presentation de rapport, Councillor Deans, seconded by Councillor Monnette.
That the report from Ottawa Community Lands Development Corporation entitled Ottawa Community Lands Development Corporation, OCLDC, 2017 Annual Report, Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee Report 36, Audit Committee Report 17, Finance and Economic Development Committee Report 36, Planning Committee Report 66A, and the report from the City Clerk and Solicitor's Office entitled Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to the Planning Act Explanation Requirements at the City Council Meeting of June 27, 2018, be received and considered, and that the rules of procedure be suspended to receive and consider items 4, 5, 7, and 12 of the Planning Committee Report 67. Waiver of the rules is being requested due to timelines as the next regular council meeting is not scheduled until August 28, and that pursuant to subsections 35, 5, and 6 of Procedure Bylaw 2016-377, council receive and consider items 1, 2, 3, 6, 8, 9, 10, and 11 of Planning Committee Report 67.
Carried? Carried. Reports, Ottawa Community Lands Development Corporation. I think we'll come back to that, we'll just go through the consent agenda, Councillor Wilkinson. Committee reports, Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee Report Number 36, Rapport numéro 36, le Comité de la Région du Quarts sur les Affaires Rurales, Bylaw 4837 Albion Road and 4910 Bank Street. Carried? Zoning Bylaw Amendment 268 Mackie Road, de sis witwa chemin Mackie, is a technical amendment by Councillor Moffett. Would you like to bring that forward, councillor?
Thank you. Just in the report, it speaks to the zoning needing to be AG6, whereas it should actually be AG8 due to the lot size, so therefore be resolved that council approve that Document 2 details recommend a zoning be replaced with the following. The proposed change of the City of Ottawa zoning bylaw 2008-250 for part of 2683 Mackie Road is to rezone the land shown in Document 1 from AG3 to AG8. And pursuant to the Planning Act subsection 3417, no further notice be given.
We'll get Councillor Elchantiri to second that. Agreed on the motion, carried. On the report as amended, carried. Audit Committee Report Number 17, Rapport numéro 17, le Comité de la Vérification, audit of the fraud and waste hotline. Carried?
Carried.
Or received, rather, apologize. Item 5, Office of the Auditor General Review of the City's Practices for the Procurement of Commercial Vehicles. Councillor, is it a quick question, Councillor Shirelli?
Uh...
On this item?
It's not.
Okay, we'll come back to it then. Committee, Planning Committee Report Number 66A, Official Plan Amendment 133 Booth Street. Councillor McKenney, I believe you have a direction to staff?
I do, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll read it out. I've worked with staff on this. Given the significance of the proposed development, council directs staff as follows for the first phase of development subject to site plan control, that a prior to the site plan application being submitted and deemed complete, staff shall encourage the applicant owner to host a public meeting with local residents and community groups in effort to discuss the details of the first development phase and an opportunity to discuss community concerns. The applicant owner shall work with the ward councillor to secure an appropriate venue and notify members of the public. Also, during the site plan control process, a community information session is required and shall be scheduled during the initial comment period. More details on the proposed uses, such as the grocery store and childcare facility, must be evident in the submission detail. The number of affordable housing units and unit type must be confirmed and reflected in any conditions of approval. Design details must demonstrate how commercial deliveries will function, and staff acknowledge that delegated authority may be removed if the ward councillor is not satisfied with the submission details in response to community interests. And this is simply in response to ongoing concerns that residents have, mostly with site plan, and obviously, you know, the councillor for the ward councillor can lift delegated authority to work on any of these, but I just wanted it on record as to what staff will work with the community on.
So, Mr. Willis, are you comfortable with this as a direction?
Mr. Mayor's staff support the direction.
Okay, so on the report, carried?
I will dissent. Sorry. I understand.
So, you're dissenting on the report, but you just moved all these conditions, okay? Next is item 7, Application for Demolition at New Construction at 443 and 447 Kent Street and Alteration at 423 and 425 MacLeod Street. Carried?
Yes.
Item 8, Zoning Bylaw Amendment 443 and 447 Kent and 423, 425 MacLeod Street. Carried? Zoning Bylaw Amendment 99 Fifth Avenue, Councillor Cherneschenko wants to hold that. Item 10, Official Plan Amendment and Zoning Bylaw Amendment 557 and 584, part of 587 Wellington Street and 550 Albert Street. Technical amend by Councillor Tierney, I believe. Seconded by Councillor Elchantiri. Councillor Tierney, please.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Whereas the report recommends the approval of the zoning bylaw amendments as detailed in Document 4, and whereas Document 4, item 2C, is specific to the 584 and part of the 587 Wellington Street and rezones land Area C from GM 7119 to MDH 83-H, whereas the lands are in Area C are currently zoned as R50159H20, as shown in the map in Document 1, therefore be resolved that council-approved Document 4 be amended as the following replace the text in 2C with the following: Area C from R50 to MDH 83-H be further resolved pursuant to the Planning Act subsection 3417, no further notice is to be given.
Okay, so that's a technical amendment. On the amendment, carried. On the report as amended, carried. Thank you. Planning Committee Report Number 67, 900 Albert. We have a number of motions, we'll come back to that. Zoning Bylaw Amendment 815 Saint Laurent Boulevard, modification de règlement de zonage, une cinquante boulevard Saint Laurent. Carried?
Carried.
Item number 13, Zoning Bylaw Amendment 3387 Boris Okane Road.
Boris Okane.
What is it?
It's Boris Okane.
Boris Okane. Carried? Item number 14, Revised Construction Costs for the Front-Ending Agreement and Design and Construction of the Goulburn Forest Road. This is something I know Councillor Wilkinson has lobbied me nonstop on, so congratulations. Carried? Item 15, Front-Ending Report Traffic Signal Terry Fox Drive at Huntsville Drive. Carried? Item 10, Zoning Bylaw Amendment 1,000 Magary Terrace, modification de règlement de zonage, une millesse terrace Magary. Carried? Item 17, Riverside South Community Design Plan interim update, mise à jour du plan de conception communautaire de Riverside Sud, mise à jour intermédiaire. Carried? Zoning Bylaw Amendment Number 18, 280 Hertzberg Road, modification au règlement de zonage, de witzeau chemin Hertzberg. Carried? Item 10, Zoning Bylaw Amendment 3,500 Hawthorne Road, modification règlement de zonage, trois mille cinq cents chemin Hawthorne. Carried?
Sent.
Zoning Bylaw Amendment 5441, 5465, 5505, and 5571 Fernbank Road, modification règlement de zonage, cinq quatre quatre un, cinq quatre six cinq, cinq cinq zéro cinq, et cinq cinq sept un chemin fair Fernbank. Carried? Item 21, Zoning Bylaw Amendment 112 Nelson Street, modification de règlement de zonage, sans doute rue Nelson. Carried?
Carried.
Differral and waiver of development charges, 5225 and 5371 Boundary Road. We have some speakers on that. Bulk Consent Agenda, I've been informed that one item, Councillor Kakish would like to remove item G, and there's a technical amendment, I believe, Councillor Kakish, on the application for approval of expropriation lands at Albion and Littrem Road intersection pursuant to section 4 of the Expropriation Act. Would you like to introduce your technical?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, it is a technical amendment, whereas after consideration of this report by Finance and Economic Development Committee on July 7, 2018, it was noted that Schedule A contained in the draft bylaw was incomplete and did not align with the property request plans contained in Schedule B to the draft bylaw. Therefore, be it resolved that Schedule A in the report from Finance and Economic Development Committee be revised. Schedule A attached to this motion and seconded by Councillor Leaper.
On the technical amendment, carried. On the report as amended, carried. Does anyone else wish anything to be taken from the Bulk Consent Agenda at this time? On the Bulk Consent Agenda as presented, carried? All right, so we're going back to item number...
Oh, sorry.
We're going to go back to Councillor Wilkinson in her capacity as Chair of the Ontario or the Ottawa Lands Development Corporation. If she'd like to come forward, and Mr. McNair is there as staff support, and I believe we have a PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the Ottawa Community Lands Development Corporation and its Board of Directors, it's my pleasure to share with you the annual report for 2017. The corporation was established to take parcels of city-owned land that had development potential and meet our objectives of providing a financial return to the city while meeting the social, environmental, and cultural need of community. Corporation exists of a board, and the staff is shown on the slide that's up above there now, that has our mandate on it. And I'm joined today by Gord McNair, who is the Secretary and Chief Operating Officer of the corporation. I'm chair, I'm proud of our accomplishments to date, and I'm pleased to present the financials in the OCLDC annual report and audited financial statements to council today. The... Next slide. In 2017, the OCLD target was 5.5 million, but gross sales generated 18.7 million for a total so far in this term of council of 24.5 million. Our five, a four-year total for net costs is 22 million, and our total costs so far are probably in the range of 2 to 3 million, so we look like we're going to exceed the amount that we had forecast we would do for the term of council. This, there are three sales that have already closed in 2017. Our three sales closed in 2017. 3071 Riverside Drive, at 16.5 million, closed on March 9, and that is being developed as an institutional and service commercial development. 1435 Randall Avenue at 900,000, closed in May. Five single detached units, and they've already sold three of the five units which are just still under construction. 2140 Baseline Road for 1.3 million, closed at the end of November, which is ground for retail and housing. In 2018, which is the next slide, we have already closed two sales, which we have secured in earlier years. We have closed on 788 March Road, which is on the right side of that slide, which is the corner of Klondike and March Road for residential development, and on 651 Longfields Drive, which is on the left-hand side, it's a small portion of the lands we've had in the Peen, in the Barhaven area. The gross, total gross sales this year are 1.4 million. We're continuing to move forward on other properties to support the City of Ottawa over the next two quarters. So, the Ottawa Community Lands has, provides the added value, that's not just to get money for the city, but to meet the community needs, and the community improvements that we have had is, includes open space, which you see on the right-hand side underneath the sign about development. We've also had lands developed for social housing within our development and funding that gone into the social envelope that helps for other projects. So, we are committed to doing these improvements in the city, because not only on financial reports, but to contribute to the social, environmental, and cultural needs. So, we are committed to maintain and continue on the sale of surplus property to achieve both optimal value for financial and non-financial community values, and that's an important part of what we're doing. You'll see that in the future sales as well. So, we're be happy to take any questions that any member of council may have on either these properties or on other things you think we should be doing.
Great, thank you very much for your chairmanship of that committee, councillor. Does anyone have any questions to the councillor or Mr. McNair? Councillor Fleury?
Yes, just a quick one. If members of council are interested in knowing what lands overall the city has, that it be LRP lands or others, what's the best mechanisms for us to inform ourselves?
Yeah, we have to remember, we don't, the Ottawa Community Lands does not get all of the city lands, but Gord McNair will answer the question more, because there are small parcels that are sold directly by the city, and we only get lands as they're transferred from councils. Many that we get, council actually knows about because you've transferred them to us, but Gord McNair will comment further on that.
Yes, through the mayor. Councillor, feel free to contact me, and I could tell you about all the lands that we have for sale through the regular disposal process and what we're doing through OCLDC.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else to OLDC? On the report, carried. Thank you very much, Councillor Wilkinson and Mr. McNair. The next item that was held is the item number 5, which is Office of the Auditor General Review of the City's Practices for the Procurement of Commercial Vehicles. Councillor Shirelli, please.
Thank you, your worship. I'll just wait for the IG to take a seat. So, I was looking through the report, and I understand all of the points dealing with the Mercedes vans, and agree with all of that, but my question is, on vehicle procurement, usually the big money is found in the regime or plan for selling old vehicles and acquiring new ones, and I know at amalgamation, the city had to put 30 or 40 million dollars, I don't remember exactly how much, into catching up from the fact that we had fallen behind in divesting vehicles at the right time and acquiring new ones at the right time. So, because by holding on to older vehicles, it actually costs us more money. We went into a formula that took into account the age, the hours of operation of vehicles, kilometers, make, model, and specific type of use, and that produced a formula, or that formula produced a schedule of when each of the vehicles should be sold to reach the ultimate best value for taxpayers over the long term. So, I'm wondering, did your audit include a look at what our new practice is and whether that has started us down the wrong road again? And if not, will you be doing one on that?
Mr. Mayor, through you to the councillor, it's an excellent question. The Office of the Auditor General will be coming forward early next year with our audit work plan, and certainly one of the items that is on the list is a review of aspects of fleet.
Okay, so that was not supposed to be... Okay, so that was not supposed to be, intended to be part of this audit?
Mr. Mayor, no, that was outside of the scope of this particular audit. We were responding to a report to the Fraud and Waste Hotline, and it addressed two aspects. Rental vehicles, the allegation was that vehicles were being rented when, during a period of a freeze, and we found that that was not substantiated. And then the other allegation was that these more expensive vehicles were being bought when less expensive vehicles would serve the purpose. So the question that the councillor is asking is outside of the scope of this audit.
Alright, okay, thank you.
Great, anything else on this item, item number five? Oh, on the most, on the report, carried. Item number nine is our next item, it's been held by councillor Cherneschenko, zoning bylaw amendment 99 Fifth Avenue.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I feel I need to speak to this item because I am actually going to be voting in favor of it passing, while at the same time I disagree with the ultimate outcome, so I do believe that needs some explaining. Unfortunately, I have found myself, and many of us, particularly the urban councillors, and more and more inner suburban councillors as well, are finding ourselves in a situation where we are seeing zoning, where we are seeing even community design plans that are being routinely ignored. There is no softer way of putting it. We have run up against this enough times that not only have we started to wonder why we even bother, but many of our constituents too. An illustration of that is the very small number of people who came out to planning committee meeting relative to all of those who came out to initial public consultations and, and who sent letters in, in opposition. So what we're finding is people are more or less giving up on trying to protect existing zoning, protect traditional main streets, and even community plans. The best that we can do as councillors often is work with the applicant, work with staff to negotiate small changes. So what we find ourselves here is, on a piece of property that is zoned as 15 meters, that's four stories, traditional main street, but OPA 150 anticipates, allows for possibly six stories. We have an application that comes in at eight stories plus rooftop amenities, which was negotiated down to seven stories. That's still three stories taller than is supposed to be allowed on a traditional main street. So I know when we're going to be debating 65 stories shortly, that may seem like peanuts, but we are talking about a very important part of a city with a traditional main street. And so I and the community association find ourselves in a situation where we can negotiate modest changes, bring down a story or two, save a tree, tweak a few corners off, change a bit of the facade, and that's the best we can get. I've said already, I said at planning committee, I think as a city, we can do better than that, and we have to do better than that. We have to plan, and we have to give certainty to constituents that when a plan is passed, it's going to be followed. So in the end, with this one, it is an amended proposal that is better than the original, but still not nearly as good as I would have, would have liked. I personally feel it's disingenuous to negotiate something, come to an agreement, and then vote against it anyway, so that's my reason why I will be supporting in favor of this. Better than the original, not good enough, but I'm still going to have to vote in favor of it because it's something that I helped to negotiate, and I can't just take a sideswipe afterwards. So I felt that needed explaining. It is another illustration of a project that, while not the worst we're going to see by any means, is still a significant change to the character of the neighborhood at seven stories, abutting two and three-story residences on residential streets at the back. And I don't believe that's what a traditional main street is and should be, it's not what draws people to traditional main streets, and I feel very strongly we must do better than this. Thank you.
Okay, anything else on item five, or item nine, rather? Carried, thank you councillor Cherneschenko. Consent by councillor Leeper. Planning Committee Report Number 67, Rapport numéro 67 du Comité de l'urbanisme. Official Plan and Zoning Bylaw Amendment 900 Albert Street. Modification en plan officiel et règlement de zonage 900 rue Albert. Carried?
Sorry, what's this?
No, no, I don't see anyone wanting to speak to it.
I believe you said there were motions and amendments, so we're.
Councillor McKenney?
Thank you, thank you Chair. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 900 Albert, my goodness. So we spent significant time yesterday on, on 900 Albert, and I'm not on planning committee, so I did not get a vote yesterday, but I have got two motions, and one of them we're still working on, it's, it's on its way. Have you got your staff sending me that? But essentially, what I'm going to.
Introduce your motions councillor.
Introduce two of them, I've got the third one coming. My first is more of a direction to, to staff, and it includes, be it resolved that staff be directed to work with the applicant in the course of developing the site plan, two. One, remove all exterior parking except that required for accessible spots from the south side of the development site. Two, develop a phasing approach to make parking available at a rate no greater than the maximum parking that would be for each of the towers A, B and C as each tower is completed, to prevent the over-provisioning of parking prior to construction being completed in each phase. Three, continue to work with the applicant on a design for the south side loading bay area that accomplishes a more significant integration of the broader community with its quasi-public space and creates an inviting pedestrian and cycling-friendly environment. Four, ensure the intersections for entry and egress to the development site to provide cyclists and pedestrians a level of service of A. Five, that the number of provided bicycle parking spaces equal or extend the number of private vehicle spaces for each phase of the development. Those are the directions as we go through, I can, happy to answer any questions as to what they, what they mean.
Hey, and your other, your motions?
The next one is, whereas document four, this is to remove 450,000 from the section 37, whereas, sorry, whereas.
Do you have a second or councillor?
Yeah, I do, Geoff Leeper, councillor Leeper. Whereas document four, the staff report identifies both financial and non-financial contributions that form required section 37 agreement, and whereas an index financial contribution of 450,000 is to be directed towards the design and construction of a future pedestrian and cycling bridge over the existing O train corridor along the former Wellington Street right-of-way. And whereas the contributions identified within the Bayview Station District Secondary Plan do not secure the appropriate funds required to design and construct the, the proposed pedestrian and cycling bridge, whereas the timing of the contributions defined within the Bayview Station Secondary Plan are undermined, undetermined, sorry, and whereas there's a desire in the community to establish new parks and open space within the secondary plan area, therefore be it resolved that section 5A of document four, details of recommended zoning of staff report ACS 218 PIE PS 0088 be amended as follows. Replace the text "An index contribution of 450,000 towards the design and construction of a future pedestrian and cycling bridge over existing O train corridor along former Wellington Street." With "An index financial contribution of 450,000 is to be provided to Ward 14. 100,000 is to be directed towards the Ward 14 Community Garden Fund, and 350,000 is to be directed towards the Ward 14 Community Parks Fund." And what this would do is it would help us to, it would help us to establish better public space along that south side. So it would be my intention, is this it? It would be my intention to establish a park on the south side of the building. It certainly will not make it a great space that it could be, but it will make it better than a loading zone. And my last, my last motion is on affordable housing. Whereas the city of Ottawa's official plan policy 2.5, 2.5.2.2 encourages the production of affordable housing in new residential development and redevelopment to meet an annual target of, and this is seconded by councillor Taylor, of 25% of all new rental housing is to be affordable to households up to the 30th income percentile. Be 25 of all new ownership housing is to be affordable to households up to the 40th income percentile. Amendment 10, August 25, 2004, and whereas the city's development charge for affordable housing reinforces that new development should contribute towards affordable housing, including the development of affordable housing in the vicinity of transit stations. And whereas the Bayview Station District Secondary Plan states that its vision is supported by, among others, the principle that investments in affordable, supportive and accessible housing developments for households below the 30th income percentile will ensure housing for vulnerable members of the community. And whereas the Bayview Station District Secondary Plan states that new residential developments will offer affordable housing with direct access to transit to afford the creation of social cohesion and a rich mix of experiences for residents and businesses, and that a range of housing types and tenures are encouraged for residential uses, 25% of all rental and ownership housing shall, and it does say shall, be affordable, meaning official plan policies. Whereas the Bayview District Secondary Plan states that the city shall facilitate partnerships with the nonprofit and private sectors to develop affordable rental housing for households below the 30th income percentile as defined in the official plan. Therefore be it resolved that council approve that the applicant be directed to provide 25% of its units as affordable housing at the 30th income percentile, including units of at least two bedrooms for households. Thank you.
Okay, and I believe councillor Harder has a motion seconded by councillor McKenney.
Thank you, sorry about that.
Councillor Harder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, and it is seconded by councillor McKenney. We all know that this is a very important opportunity for our city and an application, it's very important, and so whereas the development application in respect of 900 Albert forms an important aspect of city building, and whereas many important aspects of this development will be determined through site plan approval, and whereas it is appropriate that the ward councillor continue to have the ability to introduce motions and vote on the matter of site plan approval, with the opportunity for public delegations to be received to inform those motions, therefore be it resolved that delegated authority to staff in respect of the site plan application in respect of 900 Albert Street be removed, and that site plan approval authority be subject to and approval through a further report to planning committee and council. And, you know, it's important that we have the planning committee, whatever that planning committee looks like whenever this comes forward, we don't, you know, it's, it definitely will be in a new term because there's a lot of work on site plan to do, but that the public then will have yet another opportunity to come to before the planning committee and therefore influence the council of the day. So I think it's a, it's a comprehensive motion, one that we did with another very important file, which was Salvation Army.
Right. Okay, so just for, the point of clarification with respect to the motions, I'll just ask staff for comment. The first one, dealing with the allocation of funds, moved by councillor McKenney, seconded by councillor Leeper. Mr. Willis, do you have any difficulties with this? Is this doable?
Mr. Mayor, on the reallocation of section 37 funds, staff support the, the motion.
Okay. The next one, well, I think we'll carry it once people have a chance to speak. The next motion that councillor McKenney has put forward, signed by councillor Taylor, is with respect to affordable housing. Mr. Mark, my understanding is that this may not be permitted because we haven't passed the inclusionary zoning bylaw, is that true? And the numbers don't allow us to do this?
That's correct. In cases where a matter was subject to subdivision approval, Mr. Mayor, there would be the ability to impose conditions under section 51 of the Planning Act, because there's a very broad jurisdiction for conditions under section 51. In the case of site plan approval under section 41, the approval ability of the city is much more circumcised, and until such time as we have the necessary implementation tools for inclusionary zoning, it is my opinion that it is not possible to implement the motion that's been presented to council.
Okay, so this, we've been told by our legal staff that this is not permissible, so is there anything that you could suggest that would make it permissible in terms of the changing of the numbers to help councillor McKenney?
Going from mandatory language to encouraging would be permissible, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so councillor McKenney?
No, I actually have issue with that because the Bayview Station District Secondary Plan is very clear, and the community worked very hard to get this specific language into it, and council last term approved this plan, and it says very clearly, 1.4.8 affordable housing. A range of housing types and tenures are encouraged for residential uses. 25% of all rental and ownership housing shall be affordable, meeting official plan policies. It's also stated in the Bayview District Community Design Plan that, again, 25% of all rental and ownership housing shall be affordable, meeting housing, city of Ottawa OP policies. So I fail to see why we would, I mean, my question would be, obviously, why we would approve a secondary plan that says shall provide 25%, and then have to come back at the very first time we're building something within this secondary plan and make it a target? Why would we, why would we have ever said that we would?
So Mr. Mark, if you could respond, please?
Mr. Mayor, the councillor is quite correct as to the language of the Bayview Station Secondary Plan. However, as I indicated earlier, the necessary implementation tool in the case of site plan development is not yet available to the city. It would be in a, in a development proceeding by subdivision, but the tool is not yet open to the city at this time for site plan development.
Alright, so that is the ruling from our lawyer, who knows this file inside out, so unless you're willing to make it, what was your word, suggestive?
Encourage, Mr. Mayor.
Encouragement, and I'll, I'll put that one aside then. Councillor Harder and McKenney, I think there's agreement on that. And then on the direction to staff, it, it reads like a motion, but you want this to be a direction to staff councillor McKenney?
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Okay, so just to be very clear, Mr. Willis, it's a direction to staff, but it does not necessarily mean that staff agree to all, all the points, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, if you wish, I could go through point by point of the five points and indicate our position.
Okay.
On the first matter related to accessible spots, we'll certainly work with the applicant. There may be unintended consequences of that action on dispersing parking to adjacent sites and on-street, but we'll certainly work with the applicant to address the issue. The second issue is related to phasing, we don't have a lot of tools under the Planning Act to enable us to do this, but we'll, we'll certainly work with the applicant to bring additional clarity to address the concern raised by the councillor. On the third issue related to the design, staff support the recommendation or the direction by the councillor. On the fourth, related to this level of service A for the pedestrian cyclists, I understand from transportation staff that is not technically possible because we're budding an arterial road, but we would certainly work to ameliorate and improve the conditions to the best possible capacity on that site, and certainly we understand the intent of this is to prioritize the quality of pedestrian cycling experience and would work towards that, and might take a better wording, would we be able to support that. And on the fourth point, we're certainly willing to negotiate, this is related to bike parking with the applicant for more, but the applicant is already exceeding what's required in the zoning bylaw, so we would have no legal position to require that.
Okay. Are there any other motions for this item before we go into questions and debate? Let's get these other motions. Councillor Cherneschenko on questions and comments, please.
Comments really at this point, to pick up from where I was on, on the last item. Ultimately, what I'm seeing here is when the city has passed plans, when we have community design plans, when we have TOD plans around stations, we routinely ignore them. So unless you call a plan to ignore plans, a plan, we don't actually have a plan. We deal with these items willy-nilly. An applicant brings forward something which is so outside of what is anticipated, either by existing zoning or an existing CDP, and we as a council deal with them in isolation and tend to approve all of them. That to me is not city planning, and that is something where the city is failing. We have an opportunity in major sites. We have an opportunity in major sites to have a comprehensive plan that will actually build a community. To give some specifics to this, when we approve a tower that's 65 stories with all of the new residents that that's going to bring in, on the one hand, that's positive because that is density, where density can bring benefits, but where the increased density comes without the new parks, without the schools, without the pathways, where they're all expecting to use the plant baths, and I've been at plant baths currently on a busy Friday afternoon with children, where they're expecting to use Tom Brown Arena, I've got news for you. Don't expect that to work. When we are inviting people into new areas in large numbers, we have to be building a community that goes with it, and I am not seeing that. I'm seeing an applicant coming in that may get approved with the expectation that someone down the road will fund and do this. That's backwards to me. So it is essential that we put plans forward and we stick to them. I'm not seeing that here, and that's why I cannot support this. There are issues around very tall buildings. I've seen the studies about social engagement when you start to get very tall buildings. I've seen studies around delayed emergency response time out of Toronto, up to three minutes or longer delayed emergency response to heart attacks and other emergency calls in tall buildings. I won't get into that debate today. It's not the right time to do that, but those are all concerns that I'm not seeing being considered when we deal with an application one by one like this. So I cannot support this and would not be able to until it comes forward as a part of a convincing plan. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Conseil Fleuris, s'il vous plaît.
Yes, Monsieur Mayor. My question is to Mr. Willis. Mr. Willis, we've heard yesterday at committee the, the questions and the concerns relating to plans, and I want, I want to hear from you some reassurance or some concerns as to the process. We engage the community for the secondary plans or community design plans. We bring landowners, we bring the city, we bring community partners in those efforts. What, what sort of confidence should the community and the city and the councillors have in ensuring that whatever is decided as part of those plans is, is reflected, knowing full well that any individual applicant could submit for, for whatever proposal later on? But I, I want to, I want to hear from you on the integrity of those efforts relating to, to the plans that communities work on.
Mr. Mayor, a number of critical points I want to put on the table, and Mr. James may add to it. So first of all, it's important to recognize that the density in this application is the same density that was previously approved with DCR Phoenix. It's a redeployment architecturally of how that density was approved. So we are not actually talking about an increase in density over a previously approved plan. Secondly, going back to 2013, when the community design plan was done, 900 Albert was identified as one of the sites in the city where we would put one of the tallest buildings in the city, because we cannot put tall buildings in the central core area of the city because of the parliamentary views protection. So at that time, we thought 30 stories is the tallest that would be built. But over time, the market has changed considerably, and particularly in the last five years across Canada, when you get truly mixed-use buildings, which we're seeing now for the first time, as opposed to just buildings with condos with ground floor retail, we're actually talking about truly mixed-use buildings, across Canada, they're being built higher, and there are examples in many other Canadian cities of heights in this range, and not talking about Toronto, I'm talking about a whole range of mid-sized Canadian cities just like us. So we always contemplated one of the tallest buildings being at the junction of the two transit lines. That's the, the second point I would like to make. So it's important, for sure, that we address some of the design issues that come about as a result of a tall building. The difference between a 20 and a 50, or a 60, or a 30-story tall building, they're all tall buildings. So I think councillor McKenney quite articulately related the issues, which is really the, how the ground level functions, and they are the greatest concern. But other than shadow and wind impacts, which are studied through our planning review process, there aren't a lot of significant planning differences between taller, very tall and very taller, if you want to put it that way. So, Mr. Mayor, I, I believe the process has worked as it was intended. OPA 150 contemplated a possibly taller building on this site, and the Ontario Planning Act allows anyone at any time to file an application, and we're obligated to assess it on its own merits.
Okay. Okay. How do we, how do we reconcile? Like, I believe at the time when this plan was approved, we knew of the alignment of the LRT, because this plan was approved five years ago, I believe, seven years ago, we knew the, the alignment. How do we reconcile those objectives around transit-oriented development, and in this context, the amount of, the amount of parking that the applicant is requesting? I'm, I happen to be very concerned because we, we want to see the development, and we want, we want to see the sends at La Breton Flats. I think we're concerned as to, would this property and its parking be used for, for future purposes out of La Breton Flats rather than the actual needs of that development? And then specifically, how do we increase, how do we ensure the increase in transit use that we're all hoping for as part of light rail investments? So I think there's two components relating to, you know, the use of that parking overall, and then how do we reduce the parking to, to increase transit ridership overall?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In relation to that question, with respect to the parking, it's important to note that city council has passed direction with regard to how much parking can be provided in proximity to transit stations, and the applicant could, applicant could provide over 2,000, about 2,100 parking spaces and still be in conformity with the city's desire with respect to parking next to transit. They're providing about half of that, and just a little over about, over 1,000. And through councillor McKenney's direction, we'll certainly work with the applicant to ensure that, once things get built, because the property might not all be developed at once, that the parking is used for the uses that are on the site and not for, as, as the councillor had mentioned, other uses surrounding La Breton Flats. So we can work through that through the, through the site plan control process. And with respect to transit, this application is estimated there'd be about 1.6 million trips coming from the proposed development, a complete build-out when it is constructed in the future, I think it was 2025. So we anticipate, because of its location within 200 meters of a transit station, exactly where you want this kind of height, there will be about 55% or 65% use by transit, another 25% by, not cars, but by cyclists and pedestrians. So there'll be a lot of people who live here using alternative forms of transportation.
And are there any levers that the planning department has used in this review to, to incentivize the use of, of transit? For example, you know, the first 10 years of, I believe, most of these units are rental. I might be wrong, but from what I understand, they are. Are we able to, you know, because of the offset of parking and so on, I'd love that number to continue to reduce, but are we able to provide bus passes for units as part of the, the application itself?
Mr. Mayor, that's something actually we've done, for example, at the Sisters of Visitation, we give out bus passes or presto cards with some money on them, and certainly there was initial meeting in that regard to see about incentivizing the amount of transportation by, by public transit there, and that can be looked at through the site plan control process. That's the process where you would look through to see if you could implement that through a condition.
So, so how can, I mean, there, there was a staff discussion relating to some of the drawdowns for section 37, or has that not happened yet?
No, Mr. Mayor, the section 37 was done in 2012 with the previous owner, DCR Phoenix, and was established in the zoning bylaws, actually the first one that the city had done, so that process has already been completed.
So I just want to clarify to your previous comment relating to some of the transit pass initiatives, this would be a, a city position relating to those discussions, or it would be a, a general discussion going forward as part of site plan?
It would be a general discussion, Mr. Mayor. The, the section 37 has already been completed, so it wouldn't be part of that process, but it would be done as part of the site plan control process.
Well, I, I'd love to find a mechanism, a tool for us to revisit that and ensure that that becomes the city's position going into these, these discussions, because, like, this in my mind would be a lost opportunity. We're right on both transit corridors. There's, there's obviously an incentive to encourage transit use. We're allowing heightened density because of the proximity to transit, but we can't seem to coordinate both components. So, Mr. Willis, I-
So, Mr. Mayor, we certainly have the intention of attempting to negotiate this with the applicant, and we, we share with the councillors' views about this as being a really great opportunity. We're putting a lot of effort to design this building to be highly integrated with the station, was one of the most successful design exercises we've had to date. Because section 37 was previously negotiated with the previous approval council granted to the DCR Phoenix application, and there is no change in density, we don't actually have a legal mechanism this time, but any other application that came on any other transit station, we could certainly make that a priority as, as part of our section 37 negotiations in any other situation.
But wait a minute, we, we are, the, the negotiation around the parking reduction, so we're going from, I think, I believe Mr. James said 2,000, down to around 1,000, maybe there's a couple of hundreds there, but that is a cost to the developer. We know that parking is an expensive cost to developer. That has some financial value. Can we not use the waiver of those requirements to transfer it into a transit component?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. James can correct me. We don't have a minimum parking here. We had a maximum limit, which they had chosen to not build to the maximum, so we have no legal mechanism on this instance. Council has previously tried to prioritize non-automotive traffic in TOD areas by removing the maximums.
Okay. I only have 45 seconds, so I'll go to my last point, which is more of a comment to other members of council. I do think that councillor McKenney's on to something with the 25% affordable housing component on this. I recognize what Mr. Mark is telling us, but we know full well that the likelihood of this application going to the, the ELTAD, the tribunal, is high. So I would much rather us take a position saying the CDP, the CDP states 25%, and that we go in the negotiations in that context. So I will be supporting the motion. I, I respect what Mr. Mark is saying, but knowing that there would be an appeal, I would like for us to withhold what we've agreed to as part of the CDP.
That's it? Thank you. Councillor Eggly, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to suggest a, another alternative on that motion that Mr. Mark has concerns about that hopefully won't mean that we have to go to an appeal, but it seems to me that the, the community has endorsed this approach. Council endorsed this approach through a vote, and all we seem to be missing is the tool to, to put it in place. So what I'm going to suggest or ask Mr. Mark is, could we not reword the, the motion that you have the concern about and build in essentially an if and when clause? So in that way, we preserve the principle that the community has endorsed, we support the principle that council has passed, and, and we say, but we won't do it until we can do it. In other words, until inclusionary zoning or whatever other tool comes down the road. Rather than encouraging, I think this is a bit more bite to it, and I would be hard-pressed as to why that's not a viable option. It addresses your tool issue and says, we will, we will do it, we'll endorse the principle, but we'll do it when we can do it and not before. So I'd like to hear you on that.
Mr. Mayor, what I have suggested to the ward councillor is that legal services be directed to look at the ability to adopt something of that nature subsequent to adopting the parent zoning, and that we report back to next meeting of planning committee as to what tools are, are available to us either at that point or in the future. That would be my recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I'd still like to hear an answer to my question, though. I don't think he did answer it, with all due respect, as to what is wrong with an if and when approach. It's something used legally from time to time to anticipate what's coming down the road. We're not going to do it now, but if this happens, we will do it. So I'd like to hear you specifically on that point.
And, Mr. Mayor, as I sit here, I can't tell council that even at a subsequent date, this will be a tool open to them, and so that's why I'm recommending that legal services be directed to look at this and report back to planning committee in August as to whether or not that's even a possibility.
So fair enough. You can't tell us, but that's why I put the if in there, not when, but if and when.
Mr. Mayor, if such a motion leaves open the ability to staff to report back at a point in the future that it's not a tool open to us and to close it off in that matter, I would have no objection.
Well, I'll, I'll leave that with, with the ward councillor. If she can accept that, then if staff could draft up a friendly amendment, I'm, I'm fine with it. Councillor?
Councillor McKenney?
So, thank you, yes. So what I would suggest then is that point to, so that the applicant, I would change, therefore be it resolved that council approve that the applicant be encouraged to provide rather than obligated, and that too, that at the point in time, if and when council has a legal ability to mandate a minimum number of affordable units, staff bring forward a subsequent report to request affordable units as per the Bayview District Secondary Plan, should such be legally possible.
Does that work, Mr. Mark?
I think it does, because he helped draft it, if I'm not mistaken. So I think he agrees with himself. So this is an order, councillor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councillor McKenney, this is an order, so we'll have that. So back to the speakers list, councillor Newspom, please.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We don't-
Just to clarify, councillor Harder, staff are agreeable now with the revised wording from councillor McKenney?
Yes, thank you. I just did want to provide a, a few comments on this application because I think it's of great importance, in part because of the specifics of this application, and I certainly expressed yesterday concerns about things like the public realm on the south side of the building, the implications of the height, some of these specific elements around stepbacks. But probably more importantly, and, and what guided my negative vote on this application, were issues that have been raised by councillor Chair Noshenko and others about what this says in terms of the planning process and what we think the implication of the public trust in the planning process is going to be. And I want to get into some specifics in the remaining time that I have. First is, we've heard both this morning and, and yesterday, the argument that OPA 150 somehow changed the context of the CDP and the secondary plan that was developed with a very extensive and impressive public consultation within five years from now. And I think it's important to challenge that, because, in fact, that's not what OPA 150 did. And section 13 of, of, of the new 2.2.2 of the official plan was very clear that high-rise buildings above 30 stories, okay? Because what, what the official plan does is it separates high-rises from 10 to 30 stories from high-rises above 30 stories. So here I'm reading from point 13. High-rise buildings above 30 stories will only be permitted when they are identified in a secondary plan. And it goes on to also list conditions. So there is a double requirement that a secondary plan identify an openness to 30-plus buildings and that it satisfy a whole bunch of different conditions. So in fact, what OPA 150 did is it strengthened. It strengthened the guidance that the secondary plan and the CDP had within it, which were approved by this body. So that's very important. One cannot claim that OPA 150 somehow negates all of the work that were done in the council-approved CDP and secondary plan, which were blessed as part of 2.5.6 of the official plan. That is the first point. The second point is there are a number of other elements within the secondary plan which are frankly ignored in the proposed application, and they may seem like minor issues. For example, stepbacks. We have guidance in the CDP and in the secondary plan on stepbacks. We have guidance in the high-rise guidelines just passed by council within the last month on, on stepbacks. The zoning schedule patently ignores all of that guidance. Next point, we talk about in the secondary plan the need for a revised master plan to integrate the public realm on the south side with two, with 250 city center. Colleagues yesterday identified, and members of the public, a number of issues with the south side and how they- how they, in fact, did not integrate with the public realm on the south side. There was no discussion of the master plan to make sure that that integration takes place with that site. So, again, not addressed in this application. We've already talked about the affordable units element. It looks like councillor McKenney may have found a way around it, but the point is, is how can we expect residents to engage their volunteer time and resources and energy in very robust community consultation processes that lead to council-endorsed CDPs and secondary plans, with eyes wide open about this being a transit-oriented site, only to have planning staff recommend within a five-year period that we, in fact, ignore elements of those plans? And so, yes, you can argue in this case that some of the issues that I've raised are minor. Are step backs super important? That's a debatable point. But what's not a debatable point is, we created an expectation that this is how planning staff and city council were going to interpret development applications in this area. And I think we are doing a grave disservice to the planning process by, A, not calling out the fact that neither planning staff, nor it appears, if the vote at Planning Committee holds, council, are respecting that magical word which we've promised for years now, that secondary plans and CDPs should provide planning certainty. We are failing our residents on this. I encourage colleagues to vote against this application.
Councillor Leeper?
Thank you, Chair. The proposal is a disappointing one. We had the opportunity with this to do better. Councillor Harder mentioned at the beginning of her comments, introducing one of the motions, that we all know this is an important application, and I agree wholeheartedly with that. There are several ways in which this application fails. And I go back to the community design plan and the principles that it sets out for how developments in this critical area of the city at the intersection of our light rail lines should proceed. The, one of the principles that is in place there is that the developments near the Bayview Station should contribute to a public realm that better connects our existing communities in this area with the station and with the river. And I think one of the traps that we are falling into is to take a look at the connections that are being proposed in this application, that essentially lead people through a shopping mall, private space, and treating those as though they are public space. A mezzanine in a shopping mall that has coffee shops is not public space. It's available to the public on the grounds that the private landholder determines. And I think we have a real failure here to enhance the public realm, which is a failure to follow through on the planning principles and the design objectives that are in place in the community design plan. The other principle is that it will establish context-sensitive development that respects existing neighborhoods. I don't believe that this does. This is an island in a couple of vibrant neighborhoods, Hintonburg and Dalhousie. It turns its back on them. The connections that are going to be public are not particularly attractive. We know that we're going to ask people to cycle through what is essentially a loading bay in order to take advantage of the various different connections that are out there. This is an island. The public space is private space in reality, and I don't believe that three months of the year, when that park is actually not going to be particularly useful for anyone, that we're doing anything except to create a barrier between the residents of, particularly Catherine McKenney's ward, and the transit station. The opposite, in fact, is looking to become true in this, that rather than following through on the promise in our community design plan to create complete mixed-use communities, this development appears set to actually create a burden on the existing neighborhoods. We don't see the schools. We don't see the community centers. We don't see the recreation centers that should be the indoor public space that should be coming along with these kinds of developments. And because of flaws in our method of charging development charges, I don't see that development that continues along this path is going to result in those. We've talked a lot about the plant bath. We can talk about Tom Brown Arena. We can talk about the various different overburdened public spaces in our community that are just going to see more people yet. I do not, and I will continue to challenge legal on the affordable housing piece. This is a clearly stated directive in our community design plan that has, is attached to our official plan. We have an official plan policy to create affordable housing in this geographic area. One of the reasons why many of us supported the reform of the Ontario Municipal Board to the new local planning appeal tribunal is that we're in control now. The only bar is to demonstrate in our decisions as a council that we have adhered to our official plan. Our official plan says one thing, but for some reason, we are afraid to implement that. You know, this morning, we passed a report that speaks to an interim condition for, I think it's the Riverside South Community Design Plan. In light of the failures of this application to achieve the vision of our community design plan for the Bayview Station area, I just don't know how we're going to be able to go to those residents and say that we mean what we say. This is very disappointing. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Councillor Taylor, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I'm pleased to support councillor McKenney's motion on the affordable housing piece, and thankful to councillor Egli for helping Sherpa some of the language so that we could arrive at a place where it's seemingly likely, probably more likely going to happen. I would, though, take a moment just to jump off of councillor Leeper's point and request that planning staff or perhaps wider, planning and social service staff, do a bit of homework as to the other places where we may have approved language, where council believes we have approved language that blesses the inclusion of affordable housing, only to be told later if an application came forward that, in fact, that's not the case. You know, I think we do have to provide surety to the community, and certainly to those who are interested across this city in housing affordability and the growing pressure on that, that when we do get to a point where we believe we have a document that says that future development in Area X will include affordable housing, and that's what that looks like in this area, then that document should be real. It should be enforceable. And all the parties who embark on a development in that area should know upfront what they're dealing with. We shouldn't have to default back to, well, we don't have a tool yet in place. It's kind of like saying, we have a cure for, you know, what ails you. Show up at the hospital on Friday, only to show up at the hospital and say, well, when we said we had a cure, what we meant was, as soon as the cure is available, then we'll provide it to you. So my request is that staff do a bit of an environmental scan, any other places, and perhaps highlight for council where the language that we pass that we think is enforceable might not actually be enforceable. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Cadre, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and just a question to staff, based on this motion that's coming forward. The fact that, how can we tie a business down 20 years from now or 10 years from now when this item may actually develop in terms of putting those conditions in? I know the CDP suggests or says that we can ask for 25% in affordable housing. Anything beyond that, how do we commit a business or ask that business to commit itself on a project they don't even know when it's going to be completed?
Mr. Mayor, the various requests that have been made through council today will be implemented through the Site Plan Control Agreement, and the property owner today, any property owner who acquires a property in the future, would be bound by the Site Plan Control Agreement.
So that will be a Site Plan Control item going forward?
Mr. Mayor, those will be conditions embedded in the Site Plan Control Agreement.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, councillor. Councillor McKenney, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just before I start my comments on the entire report, I just had a question to staff about the appeal process. This would, I just want to verify, so this would, if it were to be appealed, it would be appealed under the new LPAT rule. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
And the secondary plan trumps the OPA 150, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, there are provisions in OPA 150 that aren't in force yet, however council seeks to implement them. There are provisions of 150 that are in force. With respect to the provisions that are in force, the tests in front of LPAT are that the bylaw can only be overturned if it is inconsistent with the official plan, pardon me, inconsistent with the provincial policy statement, or not in conformity with the official plan.
So then, nothing about secondary plans, nothing included in secondary plans essentially would be appealable. Is that, is that correct? Like, how would you appeal something that's in the secondary plan? What weight does this, if that's the case, what weight does the secondary plan hold within our rules, within provincial rules, within the appeal process?
Mr. Mayor, the secondary plan is part of the official plan, and so it is one of the things that the zoning bylaw must conform to. I note that there is, of course, a secondary official plan amendment before council today for consideration.
So in terms of the changes to this secondary plan, if it would be deemed that, in fact, it was very specific on height and on the south side in particular, would that be, in your opinion, appealable as a result to the local planning appeal tribunal?
Mr. Mayor, the secondary official plan amendment, if adopted, will permit the additional height that's being sought by the applicant. So it would be appealable by a third party, perhaps a member of the community. In order for their appeal to succeed, they would have to show that what was adopted by council was inconsistent with the provincial policy statement.
So the OPA 150 states, high-rise 30-plus buildings will only be permitted where they are identified in a secondary plan, and 30-plus is not identified in the Bayview Secondary Plan. So I'm just wondering how we square that circle. It doesn't make sense to me.
As a result of the adoption of an official plan amendment today, it will be identified in a secondary plan, so it will meet that test.
That's clever.
Okay. I'm just going to carry on, because I feel like I'm in Wonderland here. You know, this has been an application that we've worked on in the community, really going back to 2013, because we've known it's coming. We worked very diligently, long hours with staff, with the development community, with residents, on a community design plan, which is now part of a secondary plan, that we're being told today really can just be changed at the will of council. Although, what can't be changed at the will of council is the provision to provide 25% of affordable housing units, even though that is in a secondary plan. So I'm going to have to go away and do a lot of thinking, and I think that residents across the city really need to go away and do a lot of thinking about our plans and our rules and our, and how we are building out neighborhoods, because we really do not have certainty. There is, you know, I think that sums it up. So, you know, on the, you know, on the whole, you know, application as a whole, you know, I've said it before, you know, height, you know, we have an issue with the height because it was not, it was not what was in the plan. But height is, you know, is not in itself good or bad. It really is what happens on the ground and how we live on the ground, and we are never going to live on the ground in and around this development. It will never, we will never be encouraged to travel along that south side. We will never, as I said yesterday at Planning Committee, we will never bring our kids to play with each other on that south side. So we'll not meet our neighbors. We will not meet the, you know, thousands of people who will be living in this building, because we're not going to hang out in a loading zone, quite frankly. And it doesn't matter how safe you make that pedestrian cycling pathway, nobody will go there. First off, if you put a gender lens over it, the fact that there's nothing on either side, on one side it's a loading zone and a blank wall, and the other side really is nothing, if you stick a gender lens on that, it's quite unsafe, especially for women and young children. So we will not be on the ground. This is, you know, we also have this motion for, to provide some affordable housing. We know, while it's being passed today, we're not going to get 25% affordable housing. So in all, you know, I think that some of the directions I've tried to give staff, I hope to work with staff and the community to make it better, better than a loading zone, seems to be what we're aiming for here. And, you know, I hope to be able to put in some park space and to do some things that will bring people into, you know, integrate the two communities. But, again, there's so little about this application that is supportable, and we've heard from community members, we've heard from community associations across the city.
Wrap it up, councillor.
It really does fail the mark, and I won't be supporting it in any way. Thank you.
Councillor Harder, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few comments. I wanted to talk a little bit about the affordable housing, and I met a few times with councillor McKenney, and I've talked to others on this particular file, but we can't look at this particular file with regard to affordable housing on its own merits, as a standalone, as large as it is. It's a large complex. It's going to have a large podium. There's going to be three high towers. But the success or the availability of affordable housing does not hinge on this one site. And if you look at the work that we did in the last term, I think, or the beginning of this term, like three years ago, on the Preston file, for example, we looked at that holistically. Now we have, of course, added to that, we've got the new Civic Trauma Centre. What we don't know yet, and councillor McKenney and I were talking about this, is the Gladstone site. That's a large parcel of land. The Bayview, more development there. The Tom Brown Arena, we know that we're building on La Breton. We just approved the La Breton East, and now we have another piece, which is the 900 Albert. So I think that it would be wrong to look at and only think that we have forsaken our responsibility on affordable housing. We have a very comprehensive affordable housing policy in this city. We should be proud of that. This is like the third time I've had to say it in two months now. I'm not ashamed of it, okay? We're investing a lot of money. But looking at one building and figuring out how to, and actually, quite frankly, worrying about it when we have such a large landscape, including the city center building, which I forgot about that, and that's an unknown. It would be nice if we knew what that was going to be, because then the consideration for the backside that councillor McKenney has brought up so often, let be a better visual, I think, to understand. All that being said, every site and every project, every application that comes forward is assessed on its own merits by our staff. They work very hard. This one, they have, as our Director of Planning, Leanne Sneddon and I were saying yesterday, at the beginning of our tour of duty as the Chair of Planning and the Director of Planning, this was on our radar. So in February 2015, we were talking about this very project. So here we are today. I think the other thing that's just important too is that every two weeks, Planning Committee gets together, okay? We get together, yesterday, I forget, we had 14 items, more than that the week before. We do our due diligence, and we look at them individually, and I don't want anybody to think that that hasn't happened. So in this case, we have the- So in this case, we have the only one of its kind, that we're gonna see a location at the, the, where you have the Trillium and the Confederation Line meeting. It's incredibly important. I think that what we're seeing, too, without having assurances, is the Gatineau starting to get in the game. I think that, you know, in everyone's lifetime, you're gonna see that, a connection to Gatineau, and this is going to, this will have influence on this site as well. So I think about the fact that council supported the Brownfields development, just a few, last year, I think it was, an $8.25 million grant last year. And at that time, we heard that this project fulfills the official plan strategic directions and policies related to intensification, and helps us reach our transit-oriented goals. It's gonna help increase total transit ridership to 971,000 by 2020, and 1.169,000, million, sorry, by 2025. And it's gonna lead to public realm improvements on, on Albert Street. I think the proposal then was three tall towers, when we dealt with the, with waiving the encroachment fees and reduce the development charges to allow for the relocation of municipal infrastructure. Municipal infrastructure that's been there from the time when the, when the Canadian rail system used to chug outside of the underground of the city of Ottawa back in those days, and to make that land more valuable and able to accommodate more people. I think, you know, as you saw, we've approved the Le Breton East, which is a 45-story. We have that height down in the Preston, in the Preston area. I think that in speaking with councillor McKenney, height, you know, as she said, you know, 45, 55, 65.
You could wrap up, councillor.
So anyway, I, I'm comfortable that a lot of work, a lot of public consultation, I have a list if anyone's interested in seeing it. But I think that the motion that's coming forward from councillor McKenney and I
Thank you.
will be an opportunity to, for everyone to stay engaged.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on the matter? I'd like to say a few words about the, the development. I think it's important to remind ourselves and members of the public what this site is all about. This was a contaminated site that was never going to be developed without council support, as councillor Harder mentioned, for the Brownfield decontamination. We would have had a vacant lot in perpetuity with a city sewer running through it. Now, the proposal before us meets many of our official plan goals for intensification, because we talk a lot about urban sprawl and the need to contain urban sprawl by intensifying within the greenbelt. For transit-oriented development, you can't pick a better site for TOD, simply because it is at the junction of the Confederation Line and the Trillium Line. It's a mixed-use proposal for residents who need rental accommodation. As you saw just last week, Ottawa has one of the lowest rental vacancy rates in Ontario, and it cleans up a decontaminated site that has been sitting there vacant for years. This is a very significant private sector investment to revitalize these lands that were not really developable until quite recently. And it's also a significant vote of confidence in the future of the Le Breton area. Recently, as you know, council voted to proceed with the new central library adjacent to Le Breton flats. We've also approved proposals by Claridge at the eastern edge of the flats.
Over 50 years, the, this land of Le Breton flats were never developed.
Need it, rental accommodation, office and retail space at the juncture, as I mentioned, of the Trillium and the Confederation Lines on the western edge of Le Breton flats. Staff anticipate this development will add over 1.6 million transit trips per year, helping to sustain the long-term success of our transit investments. We need this kind of density at transit stations. We're seeing it, for instance, in councillor Tierney's ward, significant towers in the east end, next to some of the stations on, on the Confederation Line. And as everyone knows, some have questioned the height of the proposed towers. Well, as members of council know, and our city legal staff have confirmed this, this proposal meets the test established by council under OPA 150 to secure additional height, including the following: the proposed development is a mixed use, this is, it's within 200 meters of a transit station, it is, and it meets the requirement for transition. Staff are recommending an amendment to the height at this location because this proposal meets the test created by council under OPA 150. Members of council will recall that OPA 150 was carried by council six months or so after the passage of the Bayview Station secondary plan. And it's quite clear to me that the official plan tests are met under this proposal. In closing, I'd like to remind members of council that Ottawa has secured a number of wins recently in spurring the creation of jobs across our city.
I will continue to work as hard as possible for the creation of good employment in the city of Ottawa and everywhere else in the city.
... in terms of the jobs it will create, both full-time and construction. So we have before us a number of motions. We'll take them in order. Moved by councillor McKenney, seconded by councillor Leeper. This is section 37, allocation of funds. Carried. Next is by councillor Harder, seconded by councillor McKenney, with respect to delegated authority. Carried. Next is the revised motion by councillor McKenney, seconded by councillor Taylor, with respect to affordable housing. Carried. On the motion as amended. Carried.
Sent.
Sent by the five here. Okay. Item 22 is deferral and waiver of development charges, 5225-5371-BOUNDARY-Road. Who would like to speak to this? Councillor De Ruz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I just ask staff through you, Mr. Mayor, a question about the traffic impact that will make this development in, on Mitch Owens?
Mr. Mayor, just as, I don't have traffic transportation engineering staff who are involved in this file, but I understand with the improvements to the Boundary Road conditions and the fact that this is located at an interchange to Highway 417, that the company primarily, for the extreme vast majority of their trips, will be using 417 just to the interchange, just to the site. Any, any trucking outside of that would be primarily local traffic to making local deliveries, so I would not anticipate any significant change to Mitch Owens.
Thank you. So it's not really, it's gonna impact the community with the news also proposed that we just approved a couple of months ago for Taggart Miller because of the impact with the truck traffic?
Mr. Mayor, this is different in the, from the Taggart Miller, in that Taggart Miller's receiving of materials comes from citywide, and whereas this facility receives bulk shipments into the facility through the Highway 417 and then redistributes them to local delivery vehicles, minor impacts distributed broadly across the city's transportation system.
Thank you. Just, Mr. Mayor, probably if I just offer a comment, I know that it's been a lot, so we've been working very hard on that file, and I know I want to congratulate my councillor colleague Stephen Blay under your leadership. Time after time, we're seeing that there is more job creating, creation in rural Ottawa, and I know the Boundary Road is a divide between my councillor Blay and myself, and our community are really welcome, and we're very happy with this announcement, and we're gonna be working very closely with staff and with the, with the applicant to making sure that traffic will not impact our community. We're working, we're very happy to hear about the traffic that we're gonna put, signalization on Mitch Owens and whatnot. I just wanna, this is gonna create lots of jobs to our community, and it's very good news for the city of Ottawa. So congratulations, and congratulations to councillor Blay. I know he's not here today, so thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Other comments? Councillor Moffett.
Thank you. Just to follow up on what councillor De Ruz was referring to, I had some discussions with Amir Shahad, the transportation engineer, on this file, understanding that it's a final-mile destination site, that the actual trucks, the longer trucks, are gonna be coming directly off the site into the facility, will not be using the Mitch Owens, Bridge Street, Bankfield corridor. However, it's the next step, right? It's the, it's the Purelators, FedEx, it's where they go. Knowing that FedEx has moved, and that FedEx is over at Fowfield and Moody, just off the 416, what, is it possible to create assurances that FedEx, when moving from this facility to their facility, that they stick to the 417, 416 corridor?
Mr. Mayor, the councillor's topic, we're happy to take offline and do additional work and get back to you on this. It's not, it's not part of this motion specifically.
Fair enough. And then fairness, you already worked.
We certainly can have those discussions with the other parties and see what we can find as accommodations, but it's certainly not part of the regulatory approvals process for the Amazon facility.
Fair enough. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Councillor Manette.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, this motion is very important, I think, for, especially for the east end. What we look at in this motion, it will create 600 full-time jobs, and there'll be middle-class jobs. I've heard some people say, oh, well, no, this is just starting, you know, base salary type of jobs, but actually it is middle-class jobs. There's 1,500 jobs during the construction phase alone, and the, you know, some issues that people have brought forward about the city agreeing to defer $8 million in development charges for 18 months, it is, it is deferring it, it is not waiving it, so that is important to remember. The city agrees to $800,000 in interest-free, interest from DC, and that is a fact. But when you look at what we get in exchange for that, is the developer has agreed to install water mains, natural gas lines, hydro infrastructure, complete roadwork, with estimated costs of $8 million to $9 million. So I think that $800,000 is money very well spent. And it's important to also remember that when we're looking in the east end, especially in the Orleans area, for my word, is, we've always said that there's all, per, percent of employment in our community is the lowest in Ottawa, and that is something that we've tried to rectify. We've worked on the CIP account, and that's been very successful. In fact, CIP has been supported in other areas of the city, and I believe that this motion here is a big step forward for Orleans, and it is only the start, as once LRT arrives in 2022, that will show the, all levels of government that Orleans is a destination of choice. And finally, we're starting to see some movement, some very positive movement, and I encourage all members around the council table to strongly support this motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Merci, conseil Manette. Councillor Flurry.
Briefly, also, I don't think there's anything negative with this proposal, because we're in a globalization era. It's important to stay connected, the east of Ontario, western Quebec, see how we can play a dominant role. I agree with my colleagues from the east end. What confuses me, though, I only read the media report this morning, but I don't quite understand. We say we're gonna give $8 million in infrastructure, so for us, and, and also removing $800,000 of redevelopment charges. Can we have more explanations on this? Do we have the power today to say, well, the $800,000, maybe we're not quite comfortable with this? That's, that's where I get confused here, in what I heard.
Developer here is Broccolini, and Broccolini is the beneficiary of this motion today, not Amazon. Amazon's the tenant. However, Broccolini has put an enormous amount of work to bring this tenant to Ottawa, and should be congratulated for their effort. The development charges, they will pay, if they paid the bill today, it would not be subject to any interest premium, they'd pay it today. We're just saying that if they pay that bill a year from now, we're charging them the same amount without an interest payment. So the foregone interest payment in this situation is a hypothetical, it's not revenue we'd ever counted on having, it's not revenue we ever budgeted for, it's not part of our development charges revenue. And in this specific instance, there is, in exchange for foregoing that interest revenue, as councillor Manette indicated, multimillion dollars' worth of infrastructure improvements to this area that benefit more than just Broccolini's site. They benefit all of the sites in this industrial park, and that's money we don't have to spend ourselves to bring that infrastructure there. So they are creating a public benefit in this. So the rationale, we believe, for this motion is actually quite strong, above and beyond the significant job creation in the east end. 600 jobs at a time is not something that, that happens here. So we believe that in addition to the construction jobs over 1,000 as well, we have multiple public benefits that justify the motion before you today.
And, and just to be clear, the, this, this component, we, are we, have we done that on other sites or in other situations?
Mr. Mayor, legal services and clerk staff did go through a file, and we did find a number of instances in this term of council where we have entered deferral arrangements, and some instances where we deferred the interest. There was one, at least one example of another private development on Richmond Road in councillor Taylor's ward during this term of council where this was done, so this is not the first time.
And this deferral of payments, I mean, in the end, they'll pay the full charges, but in a question of years, and that is the $800,000 that is impacted.
Mr. Mayor, the councillor's correct, they will pay their, everything they're required to pay under development charges just one year later, and we're just not, through this motion, charging them interest on waiting a year, because the developer is putting all this money into infrastructure construction this year, they're not earning any rent during this year while they're putting infrastructure in and construction, so once we get that, we will get the development charges as required under the bylaw.
As long as they could never get the vacancy rebate if ever Amazon leaves.
And, Mr. Mayor, as the treasurer says, with that is no longer possible.
Councillor Cloutier, s'il plaît.
Merci, Monsieur le maire. Thank you. Just clarifying question on councillor Flurry's. So the, the $8 million that we'll be receiving, that is to, to fund the infrastructure improvements that we'll be seeing at the site in the next year?
Mr. Mayor, the proponent pays us development charges as required. Above and beyond that, they are at their own expense installing multimillion dollars' worth of infrastructure upgrades to make the site suitable for development. That is not coming through our city tax dollars, it's not something we're required to take money off of other projects in order to finance. So in this situation, we're with the aggressive delivery timeframes that Amazon requires that the site be ready for, there's no draw on public resources to get the infrastructure in place, the developer's doing that.
So that $8 million is not currently targeted for any projects?
Mr. Mayor, that is purely Broccolini's investments to bring, make their site suitable, it is not city money being flowed out to the projects, it's not a draw from any other capital projects the city would have, and nor is there need to be a draw on any other city projects.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Councillor Tierney?
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'll tell you, first of all, I was a little bit disappointed, unfortunately, that we couldn't get unanimous support of planning, having two councillors vote against it. And again, that's totally the right. That being said, the confusion comes at when we support Arts Court, Innovation Centre, GCTC, and as well as community improvement plans, we've all supported those items. So when it came to this, I'm, I'm just really hoping it's not flawed logic and it's just election fever, because this is a great project for the east end, this is a great project for the city. So when I look at all, I think we all can agree that if we can live, work, and play in our communities, it's better. It's a lot less crosstown traffic, it makes for better communities in general. Just by way of history, just so that people know, DND, when they left, left Orleans, it left a void. Amazon's willing to come in and fill that void, and this is great news, not only for the reason that these 600 jobs with benefits are gonna have to have homes, they're gonna have to pay taxes. This is very important to the east end, when we lost out on our military moving out of the neighborhood. So I want to be very proud of this, and as much as, and I know it's not John Willing's fault, in the photo in the Ottawa Citizen, Bob Manette got cropped out, but that being said, the eastern bloc has worked very hard together to, I'm just highlighting that, that working very closely together, Steve Blay, myself, Bob, and the mayor, were able to drive these kind of results, and I think it's very important. So let's celebrate this victory, and I'm asking for council colleagues to support this today. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Other comments? I'd like to offer some comments, because obviously this is an exciting announcement that was made yesterday, that will create 600 full-time jobs, good-paying jobs with benefits, in the east end, and more than 1,500 construction jobs in 30 different trades.
This massive investment of Broccolini is an excellent news for our communities in the east end.
Councillors from that area, councillors Blay, Manette, Tierney, councillor De Ruz as well, for their efforts and their support of this project, which is great news to the east end. As we all know, there is a jobs-to-population ratio challenge that has not favored the east end for End for some time, and we've heard many, many politicians over many, many years talk about, we've got to get jobs to the East End. This, my friends, is the very first significant job announcement for the East End, literally in, in the memory of my time on, in, on city council. I can't think of another opportunity when a single employer was bringing this number of jobs to the East End, and we've all been talking about addressing that balance. Kanada does very well, South End does well, the Central Core, the East End has a need for a greater job-to-resident ratio. And I'm pleased that we can finally continue the balance of our economic growth, including the announcement and the decision by Rita Carlton Raceway to invest significantly in the South End, and now Amazon in the East End. I also want to thank Steve Willis and his team for coming up with an innovative proposal that enabled us to win out against other municipalities and attract this investment to Ottawa. You can well imagine, the competition was fierce to get 600 jobs in your community. And as part of this project, Broccolini will invest a significant amount upfront, close to $10 million, as Mr. Willis pointed out, to bring water, hydro, and gas to the site, as well as major required road modifications. Now, bringing this critical infrastructure to these employment lands will support more economic growth and more job creation in the East End of the city. And in exchange, we will agree to waive interest charges that would have never been received in the first place had the DCs not been deferred. This is a $200 million investment, including bringing city infrastructure to the site, and is coming absolutely no cost to the city or its taxpayers. It's a great deal for the residents and taxpayers of Ottawa, and that's why I'm asking all members of council to support the motion that Councillor Blay brought forward yesterday.
This is good for all residents and won't cost a cent to the city. This is why I'm asking you all to support the Councillor Blay's motion.
... I'm hoping they have had an opportunity to rethink after they've heard the information from our staff that shows that this is a good deal for taxpayers, and it also talks about our greater responsibility to act as city councillors, not ward councillors. You know, members of the Rural Caucus have strongly supported a number of very important initiatives throughout the city, mostly in the downtown core, things like the library, the Innovation Centre, the Ottawa Art Gallery. These were all very important projects that everyone got behind because it was about city building. Now we have an opportunity for a little bit of reciprocity for those individuals who would like to support some economic development in the East End. So I'd encourage you to vote for this resolution. I think it's a reasonable resolution, and most importantly, I think it's a very good deal for the residents, the taxpayers, and the eastern part of our city that for too many years has been deprived of the economic gains other parts of the city have received. So yays and nays on the motion, please? Yes, what's your privilege?
Privilege, since you specifically mentioned my vote yesterday.
No, I didn't mention you by name, councillor, so those are the rules.
Well, just to be clear, you challenged the integrity of my vote.
I'm sorry.
It's not against this project, it's against bending the rules.
Well, then you should vote for it.
No, I'm sorry. Bending the rules for a specific...
Sorry. Councillor, that is not a point of, it's not a point of personal privilege.
I would vote on that basis.
It's, first of all, it's not a point of personal privilege, I did not mention you by name. So, thank you very much. Yays and nays?
Yes?
Councillor Wilkinson? Conseil Cloutier?
Oui.
Conseil Blay? Councillor Moffat?
Yes.
Councillor McKenney?
No.
Councillor Shirelli?
Yes.
Councillor Egley?
Yes.
Conseil Manette?
Oui.
Councillor Hubley?
Yes.
Councillor De Ruz?
Yes.
Conseil Fleury?
Oui.
Councillor Kakisch?
Yes.
Councillor Tierney?
Yes.
Councillor Harder?
Yes.
Councillor Brockington? Councillor Middick? Councillor Cadri?
Yes.
Councillor Elshanteri?
Yes.
Councillor Leeper?
No.
Councillor Taylor?
Yes.
Councillor Nusbaum?
No.
Councillor Chernoshenko?
Yes.
Mayor Watson?
Yes.
18 yays, 3 nays.
Thank you. Disposition of items approved by committee under delegated authority. Received. Motion to adopt reports. Motion important adoption of report. Conseil Deans, signed by councillor Harder, please.
That report from the Ottawa Community Lands Development Corporation entitled Ottawa Community Lands Development Corporation 2017 Annual Report, Annual Agricultural and Rural Affairs Report Committee Report 36, Audit Committee Report 17, Finance and Economic Development Committee Report 36, Planning Committee Report 66A and 67, and the report from the City Clerk and Solicitor's Office entitled Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to the Planning Act Explanation Requirements at the City Council Meeting of June 27, 2018 Be Received and Adopted as amended.
Carried, carried. Motions of which notice have been given previously. Motion done. Avialité donnée entièrement. Councillor Chernoshenko, please.
Thank you very much. I am thrilled to bring forward this motion. It's important to me when we see a major piece of infrastructure, especially like a bridge being built, that before people start giving it a name that isn't the right name, that we actually pick a name that we, that we wanted to have. And so we engaged in a, in a process very early, a very public process, to take, to take names, and I tried to stay out of it as much as possible. I did not want it to be a case where the councillor was trying to impose some kind of name. I had only one idea secretly in the back of my head that was, oh, please, not another male politician. Sorry to the rest of you guys around the table. We failed on one of those fronts. It is another politician, but not just another politician. In fact, the choice of Flora McDonald for this bridge is really a choice of someone who I would describe as had a life well-lived, an exceptional person who, yes, in her politics and involvement in federal politics for a number of decades, but outside of that and then beyond that for several more decades, was extremely active in a very positive way in the, in the community, but, but more nationally and, and internationally. Some people have asked, I've received when this was put out as a notice of motion, I received a lot of feedback, and it was all positive, with a number of really interesting anecdotes, except for one question, which I think is important to ask, why just the Flora Footbridge? Why not the Flora McDonald Footbridge? And I guess here, sorry to all the other McDonald's out there, but we've got a lot of McDonald's on various pieces of infrastructure in this city, but, but more important than that, we knew that Flora McDonald was known to so many people, again, very positively, simply as Flora, and her own family, when they heard about this, felt that was very positive. In fact, I have a quote from them saying she would be thrilled to know that this name, Flora Footbridge, would be going forward. It's how she was known affectionately to many people across this country, and, and even internationally in a lot of her development work as, as well. So I know that I have given all of this as background to this motion, you've seen it before, but quite simply, the motion before you is, is to approve the Passerelle Flora Footbridge as the name for a very important link that is now half-complete. If you haven't seen it, I encourage you to go and come down Queen Elizabeth Drive Way or, or Cornellby Drive, or the Rita Canal in a watercraft, and you'll see a bridge now half-complete with another really important piece to go in on Friday morning as well. And I think that will really be a bridge builder in this city, and, and highly appropriate to have the name Flora as the Flora Footbridge. Thank you.
Well, as the second motion, let me thank councillor Chernoshenko. I think the process was very open and thoughtful, and a number of good names did come forward, but I too support this. I, I had the opportunity to be on Parliament Hill when Flora McDonald was a, an MP and a minister. I didn't know her personally, but I would see her often, the McKeens' IGA, as it was called back then on Bank Street, because she lived in, in the area for 40 years on the driveway, and I'd often would see her long skating, long blade skating. She did that up until near her death. So she was very much a part of the community, even though she represented Kingston, and she was a great contributor to international issues dealing with the treatment of women, poverty. She was obviously very much implicated with the Canadian government's project and the city project under the leadership of former Mayor Dour, with Project 4000 and the Vietnamese Boat People. She was involved, obviously, in the hiding the American diplomats in the Canadian Embassy during the Iran situation, but she was, you know, very much a leader, first woman to run for a major political party in the history of Canada back in 1976, and the convention, if I'm not mistaken, was at the Civic Centre at that time in 1976. So I hope members of council support this. I thank the councillor and the community associations for their great work, and for the residents for submitting names. On the motion? Carried. The next motion is by myself, signed by councillor McKenney. This is a change of date from July 14th to Monday, July 16th, as the garage will be closed over the weekend. This is to provide free parking for people who are coming onto Elgin Street. As we know, there's significant construction taking place now, and there'll be even more significant construction next year, and in order to assist the, the businesses, and for that matter, the residents and visitors who are coming down to Elgin Street, we felt that this was a good investment to ensure adequate parking for people who want to come and take part in shopping or eating in some of the fine establishments on Elgin Street. So therefore be it resolved, the city council approve that free parking at City Hall Garage located 110 Laurier will be provided during weekday evenings after 6:00 PM and on weekends beginning on July 16th, and continue until completion of the major construction work on Elgin Street as described in this motion. Councillor Manette?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick clarification from staff. Right now, there's a agreement in place with OSIG when there's football games, and I believe for concerts also, for parking at City Hall. Will this affect the contract that we have with OSIG for games, that when they have football games or concerts? And are we assured that there's enough parking areas to accommodate it?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I think the instances of overlap are very limited, and we actually have very substantial parking capacity within this building, so I think it's unlikely that there's a problem, but we'll certainly mention your concern to Parking Operations Staff, Mr. Wylle will take that back, just to make sure there are no conflicts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good point, thank you. On the motion? Carried. Motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedures. Motion exige la suspension des règles de procédure. Councillor Leeper, signed by myself, with respect to speed reduction on Holland Avenue, on suspension? Carried. Councillor Leeper?
Mayor, a motion with respect to the speed reduction on Holland during the Harmer Avenue Bridge replacement, whereas the existing Harmer Avenue pedestrian bridge is at the end of its life cycle, is being demolished and replaced with a new bridge that will form part of the city's active transportation network, and whereas construction is recently started and is expected to continue to the summer of 2020, during which time the bridge will be closed to pedestrians and cyclists, and whereas the Holland Avenue temporary detour from Kennelworth Street to Byron Avenue was put in place to assist pedestrians and cyclists in moving through this area, while the construction of the new Harmer Avenue Bridge is ongoing, and whereas the community has provided feedback on the temporary detour, including concerns about temporarily reducing parking along Holland Avenue to facilitate bike lanes during construction, as well as concerns about cyclists and pedestrian safety in this shared corridor during the construction period, and whereas staff considered feedback from the community and explored options for a solution on the temporary detour focusing on measures that will ensure the safety of all pedestrians and cyclists, and whereas the solution allows for cycling on sidewalks and staff will be installing supersharrows on the road along with additional directional signage and traffic calming measures, including flex posts, and whereas the ward councillor and the mayor's office have held a number of meetings to discuss detours related to the Harmer Avenue Bridge replacement, with a view to maximizing safety for all road users, and whereas reducing the speed limit from 50 kilometers per hour to 30 kilometers per hour, and removing the existing 40 kilometer per hour school speed zone on Holland Avenue between Kennelworth Street and Tyndale Street would help maximize safety for all users during this temporary detour. Therefore be it resolved that council approve the maximum speed limit on Holland Avenue between Kennelworth Street and Tyndale Street be reduced from 50 kilometers per hour to 30 kilometers per hour, and that the school zone, school speed zone of 40 kilometers per hour be removed during this temporary detour, and that all speed limit signage be changed to reflect the new designation, including but not limited to all road signs, school zone signs, and signage related to temporary traffic calming measures. Be it further resolved that council approve that the cost for the installation of new speed signs on Holland Avenue between Kennelworth and Tyndale be funded by the Harmer Avenue Bridge Replacement Project budget and installed by staff in coordination with the project schedule and detour.
Okay, on the motion? Carried. Councillor Taylor, signed by councillor Wilkinson, readjustment to the 2018 contribution rebate program on suspension of the rules. Carried. Councillor Taylor?
Mr. Chair, this is to correct a deficiency that was uncovered, or at least attempt to address a deficiency that was uncovered in the Municipal Elections Act. Whereas the Municipal Elections Act establishes statutory requirements with respect to how municipal election campaigns are conducted, including rules regarding filings, withdrawing of nomination papers, election contributions from individuals, eligible expenses and campaign financing requirements, and whereas the MEA recognizes that candidates that file nomination papers in good faith may experience personal or family circumstances that necessitate a withdrawal of their candidacy, and establishes a process for such a withdrawal prior to the filing deadline on nomination day, and whereas the MEA requires that withdrawn candidates file a financial statement, and Section 88314 of the MEA requires that any surplus funds in the campaign account be paid to the clerk, and whereas although a candidate that withdraws will still have some campaign expenses that must be incurred, including those associated with hiring an auditor for preparation of a financial statement, the MEA does not currently permit candidates who withdraw to return unused contributions directly to contributors. The candidate can only return contributions they or their spouse has made to the campaign. And whereas unused contributions that were donated in good faith to a particular candidate should not become an unintended windfall for the city of Ottawa, and whereas the next review of the MEA is expected to occur after the 2018 municipal elections, at which point in time the city clerk and solicitor will include a recommendation for the remediation of this issue as part of the standard process in this regard, such that an option be provided for the return of contributions with relief to contributors and commensurate relief to the donation cap for those contributors who may be affected. And whereas the only tool available to the city of Ottawa to help mitigate the unintended consequences to contributors of withdrawn candidates for the 2018 municipal election is the Contribution Rebate Program, whereas the MEA enables a municipality to pass a bylaw that provides for the payment of rebates to persons who contribute to candidates for office on municipal council and may establish conditions under which such rebate is paid. Whereas the city of Ottawa first established a Contribution Rebate Program in 2002, and the most recent updates to the program were approved by council on November 22, 2017, in advance of the 2018 municipal elections. Whereas under the Contribution Rebate Program, individuals who have contributed to participating candidates are eligible for rebate in accordance with the formula provided for in the bylaw, and whereas the Contribution Rebate Program does not specifically contemplate a scenario where a participating candidate withdraws their nomination prior to the filing deadline, and whereas the city clerk and solicitors have the opinion that a formula based on 75% rebate of contributions from individuals to a withdrawn candidate would be a reasonable ratio, given that even a candidate that withdraws will have campaign expenses, and that a contributor to a withdrawn candidate will still be subject to the overall donation cap, and whereas it is recommended that the city clerk and solicitor, that this formula would be applied to contributors to those candidates who had registered to participate in the program prior to the adoption of this motion, and within the approved framework of the Contribution Rebate Program, including the requirements for the withdrawn candidate to issue receipts, which may be issued before or after formally withdrawing, and file the appropriate financial statement and auditor's report, and would not only apply where the candidate is withdrawing in order to seek a different office on Ottawa City Council. We're almost there. And whereas the city clerk and solicitor recognizes that this addition to the city of Ottawa's Contribution Rebate Program is an interim solution to address unintended consequences not contemplated in the legislation for the 2018 municipal election, and that this matter will be reviewed as part of the recommendations of the 2022 municipal election, should the province not amend the MEA to provide for these situations, therefore be it resolved that the Contribution Rebate Program set out in subsection 13 of bylaw 201833 be amended to provide that eligible contributions from individuals to those campaigns where the candidate has withdrawn prior to the 2018 filing deadline, July 27, 2018, at 2:00 PM, are eligible for... 2018 at 2:00 PM, are eligible for a 75% rebate for their contribution to that campaign as described in this motion, and be it further resolved that the city clerk and solicitor be delegated the authority to place the appropriate amending bylaw directly on a future agenda of council for enactment to give effect to this motion.
Okay, so on the motion? Carried. Next is councillor Harder, seconded by councillor Deans. Rescope of bylaw review work plan as it relates to fireworks provisions. On suspension? Carried. Councillor Harder, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy that the Chair of Community Protective Services is supporting this motion, whereas local fireworks displays are an important part of tradition for Victoria Day and Canada Day celebrations, whereas fireworks must be handled in a manner that ensures that public safety is paramount, and whereas safety concerns have been raised about the use of fireworks after Canada Day festivities, and whereas federal explosives regulations 2013 establishes 18 as the minimum age to purchase consumer fireworks in Canada, and whereas council approved a review of the city of Ottawa's fireworks provisions in city bylaws on June 24, 2015, as part of the bylaw review work plan. Therefore be it resolved that city council direct staff to add the following to the scope of the review of the city of Ottawa's fireworks provisions in city bylaws. Insurance requirements, total amount of fireworks kept on site, security provisions, and age requirements for vendors. Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion? Carried. Next motion by councillor Cadri, seconded by councillor Manette, with response, with regards to First Responder Appreciation Week. On suspension? Carried. Councillor Cadri, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And as you just said, it is seconded by councillor Manette. Whereas first responders, including paramedics, firefighters, and police officers, provide an invaluable service to the community. And whereas first responders in Ottawa help thousands of people each year at some of the most difficult times of their lives. And whereas the city of Ottawa supports the ongoing and tireless efforts of all of our first responders. And whereas first responders are often the unsung heroes of an emergency situation. And whereas around the world, first responders are recognised with appreciation weeks at different times of the year. Therefore be it resolved that Ottawa City Council declare October 8th through the 15th, 2018, to be the First Responder Appreciation Week in the city of Ottawa.
On the motion? Carried. That update, thank you. Any other motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure? Notice is a motion for consideration at subsequent meetings. Motion to introduce bylaws. Councillor Deans, please. Seconded by councillor Harder.
That the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, three readings be read and passed.
Carried. Confirmation bylaw? Councillor Deans, please.
That the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of July 11, 2018.
Carried. Inquiries? We have one written inquiry from councillor Taylor.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. This inquiry is to Mr. Willis and the Planning Department. A little bit of background, the property located at 975 Woodruff Avenue in my ward originally received approval through Site Plan Control for eight townhouse units comprised of four bedrooms each, and with one garage per townhouse. This project has changed to now contain approximately 97 bedrooms and the loss of all garage space, all without further notification or consultation with the community. My inquiry is, will planning, infrastructure, and economic development staff in consultation with the city clerk and solicitor department undertake a review of the approvals process to determine how this occurred, which is to be shared with myself by the end of Q3 2018? Further, as part of this review, staff should identify what impacts the changes resulting from the R4 zoning study would have had on this development, had the application been received today, and identify any further measures that could be taken to prevent future instances like this from occurring, and to identify any measures that may improve transparency and information sharing in the development approval process.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Deans?
For-
Adjournment.
Adjournment. That the proceedings of the city council meeting of July 11, 2018 be adjourned.
Carried. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.